...to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cantfield?
Here.
Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Tealander?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. And item two, under the consent agenda, we have closed minutes for the August 1st meeting. We need to also add approval of the irregular meeting minutes as well.
So, hold. I'll second it. And I will abstain from voting on the invoice to my business, but the rest of my approved agreement.
Okay. Sue, on the rest of them?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cantfield has abstained.
I'm voting yes, except for on the invoice. Just Dick, clear that up for me.
Okay, sorry.
Now, any citizen council members on the agenda today? All right, we'll move to whole business number four, showboat committee discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and State Council. Lou D'Agostino from the showboat committee is here to provide an update as to where they're at with moving the project along. Lou?
Thank you. I'm Lou D'Agostino, Chair of the Committee to Rebuild the Showboat. And I'm here to give you an update. I don't know if you have anything in your packet, but what we've been working on. We've been, I suppose, almost two weeks ago, we went to... Eastland, we went to Lansing, Michigan, Princess, who was captained by Chris Chamberlain. And we've been working with Chris Chamberlain as far as designing our new boat and getting that process moving forward. As you, everyone here is well known, well aware of what we have in our hands as far as the city. A million dollar grant came from Dave Hillbrand. And it should be plenty to build what we want to build. But what the committee is working on is how we want to proceed in this process. And what the committee is bringing to the table, the City Council, and Mike Burns to oversee, is we're looking at building the boat instead of a wood structure. Everything's going to be basically a steel or aluminum foundation. Now, it's going to be, what we're going to propose to you people in the near future is two pieces. One's going to be fifteen feet by a hundred feet, fifteen feet by a hundred feet. So the boat's going to be thirty by a hundred feet. And it's going to have the same shape as what we have now. But it's all going to be, it's going to be on barges. But it's all going to be a steel structure. The floors are going to be steel. And the second floor will be the same thing, steel structure. And the third floor will be the same thing, steel structure with a steel floor. And then we will, once we get all this from Chris Chamberlain, and this is approved by you guys, we will be able to finish the inside and the outside off the way that we want to do it, through you people. But I think it's exciting. It's something that I think the town needs, and it's been long overdue. And I'm very excited, you know, to be working with citizens of Lowell and you people as well. I mean, it's exciting. We're going to have it on the showboat. It's going to happen. It's just a matter of time. So I'm bringing in an update from what the committee has been working on. And I guess I'm here to answer any questions.
Lou, will it still require permits that we were waiting on for the DEQ? Will that be time consuming?
No. Permits, that portion of the, of our project has been set aside because the permits from the DEQ were, it involved us making a permanent structure. But we sort of put that aside with the help of Dave Austin. That, we sort of put that aside, and we're just going to focus on a floating structure. Because it's a lot. It's going to be a lot easier to do. We won't have as much restrictions. And it's something that the committee in Lowell has seen, that I think that's the way we should proceed.
What's going to happen, I mean, this will come as a surprise to my wife when I'm looking for a new fishing boat. What's going to happen to the old boat? Is it available?
Well, the old boat, we really, we discussed it a little bit, Jim. And what we're planning on doing, and I'm just speaking for myself. You know, and we haven't, we discussed it a little bit in the committee. And we haven't really solidified what we want to do. But basically, I'm thinking on maybe auctioning off some of the boat, because there has been a lot of people that have come to myself, and maybe to everybody on this committee, you know, the council here and other citizens in Lowell, that would be interested in having part of the boat. You know, just to keep, and maybe hang in their garage, or their man cave, or whatever. But we're thinking on maybe auctioning off bits and pieces of the boat. And we're also thinking on, as far as the steel portion of the boat, we'd like to get that and salvage that. Maybe work something out with the people that we do hire to demo the boat. Maybe we can work something out as far as that would be their payment for demoing the boat. You know, recycling the metal, the pontoons and the steel structure that is there. And we do, we do want to keep as much as we can, maybe part of the pilot house, maybe the smokestacks, maybe the wheel. You know, we're not, the panel wheel, we're not, it's all sort of up in the air as, you know, as...
So some of it will be dismantled and applied to the new boat?
Yes, that's how it works.
And some of it will be in the fundraiser?
Yes.
I imagine that's easier than finding a trailer park.
Yes. Yeah, you know, it's sort of up in there. This all, as you well know, has come, it was a windstorm for us. You know, we've been working with the DEQ and through Dave Hillbrand's office and Liz Baker. I may not have their correct dates done, but I think it was about a month ago, she got a call from Dave Hillbrand. And Dave said, "I have something for you." And he told her what she had for him, and she was, like the rest of the committee, was just set back, flabbergasted, or whatever word you want to describe it. But, you know, and I think you guys are in the same boat. I mean, when somebody from the state has given us a million dollar grant to keep this going in town, that's pretty, that's pretty neat. I think it's pretty neat.
Really, pretty neat?
Yes. I'm trying to hold back my excitement.
Lou, you mentioned in the past that you would like to have some kind of a funding operation set up to continue to maintain it through the years so that the next generation won't be faced with what we're facing. Is that in play? Will that be part of the auction? And what are your thoughts on that?
That'll be part of the auction, plus our goal as a committee, when Liz started this committee up, was to get at least 1.2 to 1.5 million. So we've already been given 1 million dollars. So we're still, and we haven't set that in place, our fundraising portion of this. So we would like to raise at least another half a million to maybe three quarters of a million dollars to provide more work along the Riverwalk, to tie the Riverwalk, and maybe help the city remodel some of the buildings down there for the summer concerts and for the activities that are on the showboat, so people could be, it would just be more palatable to the people. You know, as far as restrooms and other areas, you know, the head and station, and maybe there's been some talk between us and Rich that maybe we could take part of the DPW garage, if that's a possibility. But there's a lot of things that aren't set in stone, so to speak. But, you know, it's, we're working with what we have and what we're going to get. And it's going to depend on how our committee and you people and the citizens of Lowell can all work this thing out together. I mean, it's going to be a community activity, it's going to be something that you people will be a big part of. And I'm very excited to be a big part of it myself, and I hope you guys have that same feeling, because it's, this is neat. This is something that, you know, the showboat's been here since 1932, and our goal was to repurpose the showboat, and that's what we're going to try to do.
Dwight, did you want to?
Yeah. They've given us a couple of different options for consulting agreement with Mr. Chamberlain. There's a couple of things that I need to go through it. There's, I would like to have a certain process in place as we move forward as regards to how we're going to set up the design and engineering and architectural components as well. So there's a couple of things that need to be addressed on that, and I anticipate having a proposal to you shortly to review and approve.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have the food truck ordinance 17-2 and resolution 21-17.
In your packet is a proposed ordinance regulating food trucks in the city. At our last council meeting, we reviewed the ordinance, and I didn't see any concern with what was, I didn't sense any concern with what was proposed by the council. I was directed to come back to the council with recommended license fee options for entities which would seek licensing under this ordinance. I've reviewed a number of communities, ordinances, and fee structures. They vary across the state in fees and how they carry out their ordinances. The city of Muskigan has become a place with a strong food truck presence in their downtown. And after discussing with them their fee structure, I chose to recommend a model similar. I'm recommending the following fee structure. We would initially start by an annual fee of $300 for a food truck, trailer, or cart to operate on any city-owned or controlled property and private property in the city. An annual fee of $150 for food trucks, trailers, or carts operating only on private property. This would be more towards like your truck that would go to a business, serve lunch at the business, something of that nature. An annual fee of $50 for a food truck, trailer, or cart owned and operated by a property taxpaying brick-and-mortar restaurant operating on city-owned or controlled property. No fee, although a license is still required for operating a food truck, trailer, or cart on property owned by the vendor. Vendor buying, a vendor buying multiple licenses in the same year will pay the full price for the most extensive license and half price of the applicable license fees for all additional licenses. Meaning, if you had a vendor that had multiple food carts, you charge them the higher rate for one, and then the lower rate for the remainder. A food truck, trailer, or cart selling only prepackaged or not perishable food shall pay a license fee equal to one-half of the otherwise applicable fees. This might be like your water, ice cream, something to that nature. A food truck, trailer, or cart operating on a one-time event or either a city-owned or controlled property or private property who has not paid an annual license fee shall pay $50 per event, per food truck, trailer, or cart. This is more geared towards our events. $50, I don't think is an unreasonable request for that. I'm recommending the City Council approve ordinance 17-2 pertaining to the food truck ordinance. And I'm also recommending the City Council approve resolution 21-17, setting the fee structure for the food truck licensing. If you can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Just to add two points to the resolution, in addition to the fees. The resolution would set the operation time between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And then the other is, if a food truck is to operate on city-owned or controlled property, that would require the prior approval by the city manager or is a heretic need. So rather than trying to identify, Mike and I talked about, is areas of the city or parking lots or whatever, we thought that in each case, the city should review that and approve it before it happens. So when we do events such as the Riverwalk Festival, you could defer to Liz Baker, of course.
Yeah, we can put locations, you know, we can stick to wherever we're at now, or wherever we would like.
As much like it has been.
Correct.
Great work. I'll skip a lot of conversation here, so will it make the motion that we approve ordinance 17-02 pertaining to food truck ordinance? Can you do that first?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the first one? Sue?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And follow that up with, I think, a motion to approve resolution 21-17, setting the fee structure as well as hours of operation for the food truck licensing.
I'll second.
Discussion on that? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
All right. Item C, under whole business, medical marijuana. If we need any additional time to discuss that, anybody? No? All right. We'll move on to new business, North Jefferson Street resurfacing.
On April 3rd of 2007, City Council awarded the bid for North Jefferson Street resurfacing and utility improvements to CNL Trucking in the amount of $449,110.50. And as a reminder, that projects include the resurfacing. North Jefferson from Avery to Fremont would select water main and sanitary sewer replacement and some limited sidewalk replacement. Approved project change orders from items such as additional road rating and material and utility field changes to water sanitary storm have been submitted for an additional $21,765.86. And funds for that change order are available in the following funds, being the wastewater collection fund, $11,086.84, and water distribution fund in the amount of $10,679.02. With the approval of tonight's change order, the total cost for the Jefferson resurfacing and utility improvement project is $438,172.85, which is under budget. Second part of this communication, then, is we added Fremont Street from Washington to Monroe. We took advantage of the low unit bid pricing and extended pavement between, down Fremont from Washington to Monroe. Gave that to CNL Trucking as well. And we justified that addition of the work because Fremont was a major street and a truck route connected to Jefferson's project. Underground utility work was not necessary at the time, and road-based material was sufficient for resurfacing. Fremont had a low Peso rating also, and visual inspection indicated that Fremont was a good candidate for resurfacing. And, as I mentioned, the low unit bid pricing for the labor and material made the additional work economical, and the contractor and equipment were mobilized on site already for Jefferson, which resulted in the cost savings to the city. Funding for the Fremont Street resurfacing project was established in this fiscal year's budget for $99,000. And CNL Trucking submitted a final payment request for $58,716.20. So that did come in under budget as well. Tonight, we recommend that the City Council authorize payments to CNL Trucking and Excavating in the amount of $88,482.6 for the North Jefferson project and the resurfacing on Fremont Street.
I'll make that motion?
I'll support.
Yeah, that'll, that'll come out of this year's budget, the current fiscal year's budget, so, and which we have funds set aside for.
Anybody else? Sue?
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
All right. Well, to item B, resolution 22-17, professional service agreement with HydroCorp.
Attached is a professional services agreement for HydroCorp and the city to provide ongoing cross-connection control program inspection services for a three-year period. HydroCorp has been providing services to the city for the past 12 years. They currently manage the cross-connection control program. The purpose of this program is to protect the drinking water from any non-poreable water sources. The rules and regulations are set forth in the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act, Act 399 of 1976. Currently, we have 345 industrial, commercial, and industrial accounts that are routinely inspected based on a level of hazard. HydroCorp handles all the scheduling, mailing, record, record-keeping, and communication with the state of Michigan DEQ. And the current contract that we're in now costs $815 a month, or a total of $9,780 a year. The proposed professional services agreement for this contract in front of you is $947 a month, or $11,364 a year, because it will include residential cross-connection inspections. The state of Michigan DEQ is increasing compliance requirements on communities that do not have a residential cross-connection program. And that is things such as lawn sprinklers, for example. Failure to comply with the standard can result in fines, and HydroCorp proposes to complete 297 inspections or re-inspections over the term of this contract. The Department of Public Works has planned for the increased compliance and budgeted accordingly in fiscal years 17 and 18. Funds for this activity are available in the cross-connection account. I recommend City Council approve the professional services agreement with HydroCorp and authorize the city manager to approve on behalf of the city.
For that motion?
I'll make a motion that the council approve the professional services agreement with HydroCorp and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
I'll support. Discussion, Sue?
Councilmember Cantfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, the MERS meeting officer.
The 2017 municipal employees retirement system, MERS, annual meeting is being held this year on September 21st and 22nd at the Marriott Renaissance Center in Detroit. Council needs to appoint employer delegate to the annual meeting, and ballots are distributed to the employees, and they selected Gail Chitwood as their delegate to represent the City of Lowell employees. Employer also needs to, as I said, employer needs to select a delegate as well. Recommending that the City Council appoint Steve Doctorlou as the employer delegate for the 2017 MERS annual meeting.
Sounds like a pretty good choice.
He may regret.
All right. You made a motion, and I'll make that motion to appoint Steve Doctorlou to be as our employer delegate.
I'll support.
I'm assuming there's no discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to board commissioner reports.
Nothing to report, no meetings.
Mr. Tealander?
L.A.R. Mount, two weeks ago, and the Alvin Nash Project is moving along well. The trail has been marked, and Zach's Lawn Care is now mowing the trail where it meets the Foreman Road going south. Rich looked into trail cutouts at the new homes on G Drive, and we're going to be discussing his recommendations on this Wednesday when we have the next L.A.R. meeting. And right after that, I'm going to run to the Lowell Light Power meetings, same night.
Thank you. Mr. Hedges?
Thank you, nothing. Believe me, I wish it was, but the next one, the next one.
You look exciting.
Well, we've got a lot going on here in the historic district commission. Permit applications for 219 East Main signage, 106 West Main storefront renovations, grant applications for 218 East Main painting, brick repair, 217 West Main painting, 219 West Main painting, 325 West Main paint brick repair, 106 West Main storefront renovations, 215 West Main painting, and then a couple of project updates, 318 East Main windows and 120 West Main exterior renovations. Next meeting will be August 22nd at 6 o'clock downstairs.
Thank you. We will be on the Vision Alliance meeting on Tuesday and the DDA on Thursday. That's all I have, so that makes it your turn.
Okay. Looking forward this week to coming out to the youth fair. Be my first time seeing the youth fair. When I got hired, I was a week before youth fair, so I never saw it. And I drove by it this morning, and there were a lot of people there, I didn't realize it was that big. I'm pleased to say that all of the labor contracts for the city have been settled. That includes the Light Power contract with Light Power, the police labor contract, and last week, we settled the Department of Public Works contract. Want to thank all of the parties involved to working together to come towards pretty amicable agreements for all three contracts, I think. This week, both Rich and I would be working with, meeting with Mark Anderson. We're going to be just discussing the plan for maintenance for the L.A.R. trail. L.A.R. is going to be managing the future trail, but one of the things that we've kind of, they're going to be approaching all of the municipalities for is probably an increase to their maintenance costs to be able to provide that maintenance. So we're going to be meeting this week to discuss that. Last week, at the, at our last City Council meeting, we approved a contract for, a football contract for Lowell youth football at the site. Something we learned about Burge Field was that back in 1994, I believe, there was a transfer of ownership from the school to the city, where the city was supposed to own it. However, what we found out is the deed is not transferred. So that paperwork has been sitting out there for 20-something years, and the paperwork hasn't been finalized. So we're going to, we're going to correct that here very soon with the schools. And then, once we do that, then I can actually execute that agreement. But it was something that we, I don't know what happened, but it's something we're going to fix. Something that we did budget for this year is a new website. Our website is probably in internet world is probably functionally obsolete. And it's something that we have budgeted for, and hopefully this year, we can get a new website. So both Sue, Larry, and I will be working on that here relatively soon. Possibly, we could look into that. Just a reminder, we'll be leaving here at 7:30 on Friday to go to Fenton, to where their downtown district. I'll have more information for you this week. I know I talked to my old boss, and we're going to have a pretty good day planned for you, it'll be educational for you. The last thing I want to address is Chief Buclow. As we all know, the situation with him, he's been on unpaid leave since July 14th, I'm sorry, since June 14th. I have been involved in every aspect of this matter from the beginning, from when the Michigan State Police conducted their criminal investigation, through the prosecution process, and now he's currently in the judicial process. And I've had the opportunity to evaluate the reports, conduct my own investigation. And I've talked to Steve Buclow many times regarding this matter. And I have chosen that I will not be dismissing Chief Buclow as a police chief. He will return to duty once his court case is settled. Very simple, he was charged with five misdemeanors. Make it fair, these occurred four to five years ago when he was not the chief of police, he was a patrol sergeant. He's involved, his ex-wife, and unfortunately, he's had a very tumultuous relationship with his ex-wife that has been, unfortunately, it's drawn into a situation where it got, his duty as the police officer, police chief, got in the way. However, I've evaluated this situation every which way, and I strongly believe that he can come back and serve as the chief of police in that position. And I believe that once this is done, he will, I think the punishment is enough. I cannot condone his activity, I did not condone his activity, but I do not believe it requires dismissal of him. So that will not happen. And we have met about that, and when he returns, he will return once his court case is settled. He would go, he's supposed to go back to court on September 1st for a hearing. If they cannot resolve it at that date, he will have a jury trial beginning on September 12th. Once that jury trial's completed, he will come back sometime after that. But this has been a very, it's a very stressful situation for Steve, his family, the police department, and really, the entire city. But a resolution towards this is going to be very... But a resolution towards this is going to be very soon. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council comments, Jeffrey?
I'd just like to thank staff and all the partners for the hard work that they do. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges.
I'll have to thank our city manager for all the work that he's been doing between the police situation as well as the union negotiations, the food truck ordinance. I'm a busy guy. And really appreciate all.
People don't think I do anything.
Well, yeah, we don't matter. And we really appreciate it and, and I want to thank you. But let me add one more thing for you to do. I, I think this might be a great opportunity since the Bible Digest seems to have gone away and we're not dealing with that, that we might want to look at reviewing the nuisance ordinance, especially as it may pertain to holders and those kinds of things. And that I think that the $300 incident might not be enough money. And this would be a good time since there's a lull to look at that if you would choose to do so. So we can put a little more teeth into it should we enter into any of those situations again. So I just encourage you to maybe think about that and maybe bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hedges?
I'd just like to thank Dave Hildbrand. Dave is a local guy that went to school here and he's a political rock star, done really well. And he'll probably be governor of the state someday. But for him to find a way to bring a million dollars to Lowell to help us with our project is, is really great. So thanks, Dave, for that. Again, looking for citizen input on, talk to your council members about anything that's going on in the community because you have five people making decisions here. And if we hear from you, it gives us a lot more things to base our decisions and goals on. And I am glad to hear Steve Bukala will be coming back. Steve was good for the city. I think his employees enjoyed working for him and it's just good news that he's coming back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealander.
Yeah, I agree. Welcome back, Steve. Great, great job, Mike. And I appreciate city manager Mike bringing all the information for the marijuana meeting. He pushed a lot of stuff at us and it was both, on both sides, it was very, very balanced. So I appreciated that. And welcome any citizen comments. Get ahold of us because we want to hear what you're thinking, what you're, what you want us to do because we can't do it alone. And we are so blessed to have that million dollar grant come in and Lou's doing a great job. And just what a wonderful city we have here of beautiful citizens. Yep. So thank you.
I always have to go last and then my list is always gone because other people cover it. So I will reiterate what everyone said. And then we'll look to Mr. Hedges.
I would move that we need adjourned and out of this place at 7:36.
Support? Discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Let's move to the fair.